Little meeting, first half of the pledge. We're religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains us, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the May 13th, 2014 meeting of the village board. Our first guest, the county legislature, Joel Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, board members. So, there was a vote last night in the county legislature about the jail cell pods. Been wrestling with the issue for the last 10 years I've been in the legislature. I just wanted to explain briefly my position, you know, why I voted the way I did. I understand that there are 200 Dutchess County jail inmates that are housed out at other jails, you know, in New York State every day, which is a lot. But if you actually read the report from the Dutchess County Criminal Justice Council that came out about a year and a half ago, it recommends very strongly transitional housing alternatives for women mentally ill and youth. According to Dutchess County Jail Administrator George Crom, there were 55 women in the county jail. There were 86 Dutchess County jail inmates in March who received treatment, basically. And there were, I think, 13 youth. That's 154 right there. The Poughkeepsie Journal reported July 22nd last year that the National Institute of Correction has found that halfway houses for state parole violators who, you know, may fail a urine test instead of being, you know, put back in jail for $300 a day in Dutchess County, maybe put them in a halfway house if all they did is fail a urine test for $65 a day. And there's 19 state parole violators. That brings it up to 173, which is pretty darn close to 200. There are about 20 folks in the Dutchess County jail with bail set at $500, $1,000, $1,500. These are folks accused of nonviolent misdemeanors. They haven't done anything, you know, to basically cause a threat to society. For decades, Tompkins County has had a united way agency called Opportunities for Alternatives and Resources, OAOtomkins.org, saves $400,000 a year with a bail loan fund for people that are accused of nonviolent misdemeanors. This is in a county with less than one-third of their population. That's about 200. And I've been working on this issue for 10 years. I brought some of the top experts in the state over and over again to Poughkeepsie and Dutchess County for forums, people that have cut the recidivism rate from 68% to 9% in Albany County, Peter Gumm's programs, PYHIT.com, you know, trying to get these ex-cons connected with services and jobs and housing and treatment after they get out. John Chaney, I brought up from Brooklyn. The Brooklyn DA Charlie Heinz, 15 years ago, started the ComAlert system reentry. New York Times has recognized it, Harvard's recognized it. Incredibly slash recidivism right there. In Dutchess County, because we don't have this, two-thirds of the guys are locked up again in three years. We don't have a YMCA anymore in Dutchess County. We don't have YMCA. We don't have the Big Brothers and Big Sisters. We don't have a Green Team Community Garden program in the city of Poughkeepsie. And if you talk to Robert Wright, a millionaire in directions on Main Street in Poughkeepsie, he says, "Easy, there's an extra 100 at-risk city Poughkeepsie youth every year that he can take off the streets, put on the right track if he had the money to do it." So there's a huge... The youth programs, the county funding for youth programs, and other programs have been destroyed and decimated. So one of the points, I'm hoping, you know, this vote went through last night. There was already $2.6 million approved last year for jail expansion. Last night, there was another $6.4 million approved for the 200 jail cell pods. That's nine million. There were Republicans and Democrats that are now talking about, because I've been the one guy in the Dutchess County mobilizing people to come out and speak. There are Republicans and Democrats now talking about, "We need to put some money back in for our youth." So there's a little bit of window opportunities, there's a chance. So if anybody on this board, anybody watching, anybody else in the room wants to save a little money, I'll just say that the US Department of Justice, Vanderbilt University came out with a report. Each at-risk youth, and my job during the day, I work with at-risk youth in Ulster County, each at-risk kid, if you put on the right track and you keep them on the right track, saves $1.5 million to $2 million because you don't have to pay when they get mixed up in criminal justice. And we're throwing a lot of kids away in Dutchess County. And one of the big reasons why, unfortunately, I think some people are forcing a $200 million jail expansion, because after those pods get put in, and unfortunately, that was the vote that went down last night, the argument then is going to be, "Well, it's inhumane to keep these folks in pods, so the humane thing to do is a $150 million jail expansion." So I really urge people, it's not too late to get involved. Go to ENJAN.org, E-N-J-A-N.org, jobsnotjails.wegle.com. I'm not a huge fan of Jeb Bush or Newt Gingrich or Grover Norquist, but those three gentlemen are involved in an organization called Right on Crime, because there are many Republicans all across the country that are trying to stop prison expansion and jail expansion. June 10th last year, big outbid piece in the New York Times about this, ConservativeHQ.com, Richard Bigg reached. The website is RightOnCrime.com. Tomorrow, right across the way, at Ryanbeck Town Hall, I'm doing a public hearing on Central Hudson Price Gouging. Chuck Schumer, the senator, he's far from perfect, but even he has recognized what everybody in this room knows, that before the new capacity zone rate hike, our electric rates were skyrocketing for months and months and months, alright? And so, I'm looking, I've already asked my colleagues in the county legislature to hold similar public hearings all over Dutchess County and the Hudson Valley. Tomorrow night, we're in Ryanbeck, 5:30 PM. I'm asking all of you to bring copies of your electric bills for the last month or two, and then go back to, you know, September, October, November, December last year. And I'm hoping to have these all over, because when Chuck Schumer, a man who unfortunately has made a little bit too much of Wall Street deregulation, and even Chuck Schumer says that there needs to be a full independent investigation of Central Hudson for price gouging, there's something to that. And the Daily Freeman has reported the top five guys from Central Hudson raked in $22 million from that fortis acquisition that supposedly they weren't looking for. And Central Hudson's made $35 million a year in profits for many years. Something else, five years ago, I got a resolution passed, 22 to 3, so many Republicans and Democrats voted for it about Lyme, May is Lyme Disease Awareness Month. The resolution that I got passed five years ago, 22 to 3, was in support of Assemblyman Joel Miller's bill for New York State to be like Connecticut and Rhode Island, make sure that chronic health insurance, health insurance is there for Lyme disease, Lyme and tick-borne disease, many years before the Poughkeepsie Journal started covering it. Just a couple of days ago, I think it was yesterday in the state assembly, they passed that legislation, now we gotta get it through the state senate. Terry Gibson's picked up this over the last couple of years. I just urge people, 877-255-9417. Terry unfortunately is not part of the ruling majority of the state senate. So if you want to make 2014 the year that that legislation actually passes, it's 877-255-9417. Call the governor's office, call the state senate, and we just want to talk about it now. For many years, I've hosted free screenings of Fred Nagel's DVD projector set of a movie called Under Our Skin. You go to underourskin.com, it's a movie about Lyme disease and tick-borne disease, and it's amazing, there's about 500 people signed onto my petition from all over the state for real health insurance coverage for Lyme and protection for the doctors, the Lyme-related doctors. The screening that I'm hosting with Fred Nagel's equipment is going to be Friday, May 23rd, 5:30 PM, at Ryanbeck Town Hall. That's Friday, May 23rd, 5:30 PM, Ryanbeck Town Hall. I've seen the movie many, many times. Part of me wants to tell myself, "Joel Miller, why are you doing this?" But I'm amazed that the assembly actually finally passed this legislation. So now maybe there's a chance that we can actually get health insurance coverage for Lyme this year, and the more people that come out to that, the better. Real quick, for a decade, over a decade, I've been talking about, we could save so much money with the Canadian prescription drug option for county employees and retirees. Finally, there are two Republicans talking about this. Last Thursday during Committee Day, Angela Flesland, Ken Roman, to their credit, brought this up during the Budget, Finance, and Personnel Committee. WAMC reported four years ago, Schenectady County saved a lot of money this way, $13 million over the five-year period. We would have saved $30 million over the last decade if we had a Canadian prescription drug option for county employees and retirees in Dutchess County as Schenectady County. That's not chump change. We would have saved $30 million. And now there are Republicans talking about this. If you would like to save some money for Dutchess County taxpayers so that we don't have budget cuts and layoffs and insanity, you know, withholding money from municipalities, I can't talk right. You need to reach out to Mr. Malnau and everybody in the county legislature to make that happen. Just a couple of things. The Orange County Legislature, last October, passed a law against pay-to-play, you know, for county-level campaign finance facilities. You get a big contract from the county, you cannot make a big donation. I've been pushing for this, the late great Lucille Patterson and I started to push for this in Dutchess County in the late 90s. There was a Republican majority in the Orange County Legislature that passed that last October. The folks who are running the county government right now are not even allowing our proposal for my caucus for that to happen, to clean up Dutchess County government, stop pay-to-play. It's not even being allowed onto the agenda for Committee Day, okay? Same thing with the well testing legislation that even the Poughkeepsie Journal has editorialized for, when properties change hands, same thing, the neighbor notification for pesticide application that the Daily Freeman has editorialized for, that they have in Ulster County. None of this stuff is even being allowed onto the agenda for Committee Day. And I'm saying it now because I'm trying to get the meeting to cover it, and the media hasn't been reporting on it. So I'm just putting that out there. Last but not least, I know there's a local event here, but I, we are gathering, we're trying to get 1,000 people on the walkway over the Hudson at some point this year, and we're starting this Sunday afternoon, and I know there's a local Ryanbeck cemetery, and I didn't mean for the conflict to happen, but I just urge people to go to thesolutionsproject.org. If there's one way to create jobs, four and a half million green jobs by 2030, save $36 billion a year across New York State, save 4,000 lives a year. And the comment period is still open on the New York State Energy Plan. It's thesolutionsproject.org. These scientists, these professors from Cornell and Stanford came up with this plan, and it's amazing, it would just buy solid everything. 58,000 permanent new green jobs, four and a half million temporary new green jobs. So, I know that was way too much, I will not be that down next month. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm at 453-2105, 876-2488. Thank you.
So I did a little skip around a little bit on the agenda, we have a couple. Is it, Joanne, you wanna talk to us about the...
Thank you, and I don't have the monologue.
Yes, you do.
Oh, thanks so much. Joanne, you go. I was asked to just follow through this, thank you, Matt. Is everyone familiar with it?
Okay.
We're attempting to get the consortium, which is all of the historical groups together, and support this kiosk, which I think is supposed to go near the Del Boy on that little green, and that's a matter of controversy of sorts, but it's workable, it's workable. There is a spot there somewhere near the bench, and I think it just needs to be talked about a little bit more. I think Marilyn Hatch was one who started it, and Marilyn is now in Ryanbeck area. So I've been asked to just keep it on the back burner, let you know that it is being processed, the man that Dave signed, Chap in Red Hook, is working on it, I will be in touch with him. The money is a Don Quixote thing, I don't know who has it, maybe you have a treasure of... Museum of Romantic History, what's Bill Clark's doing here? Melissa, Melissa Clark supposedly is the person you have to contact regarding the money. The money is, has been allocated, so that's not the issue. It's placement, and who gets what kind of coverage. These would be where the brochures were placed, and they should be underneath the roof, the roof will be copper. It's really nice, nice plan. So I'm being asked for anything.
Looks, looks, looks very nice though.
Yeah, cleaned up, I was in on that, that's kind of why I'm presenting. And it's readable, and so I'm not going to go today and say finish it up until I know where that money is.
Joanne, how many are we doing here, at least one?
This is just...
Just one?
One, kiosk. And then there'll be brochures from the organizations available, which will be happy to be furnished by a group of help. And if we see that this works and helps the sites, like this weekend, the cycles, including history, is fantastic, I think all of this needs more careful. So, thank you for your time, and I just want to...
The size of this is, why is this...
I actually don't really have any...
3 by 5, I think.
What is it?
I think it's 3 by 5.
So is it?
Lucky. Yeah, see, I'm just starting. I'm tired already, but I will, I will. And I'm always...
Yep, they're forth for you guys?
Yeah.
So is there a, is there a plan that shows like, maybe like a site plan of sorts that shows where to...
Of where to put it? Not yet, no. I have to revisit that, because I heard that Dave Miller wanted to talk to me, and there was some concern about how close to the bench and so on, that's why I'm still...
You've just thrown into this, right?
Yeah.
So that would be one thing that I think we'd like, I would like to see, at least where that island is situated.
Exactly where the location, yeah.
And then I think just a little bit of the design of the structure and the roof, the posts, the roof, and those kinds of things.
Oh, okay. I'll hand that from him, yeah.
Some sort of maybe a rendering of sorts, maybe just a...
I'll do that, I could draw a plan after I've talked to him. Sure, I'll give you more dimensions of this. All right, so I'll be in touch about when you get that done, there's no hurry.
Is there any...
The planning board, yeah, they kicked it back, and the big questions that came up were that it didn't have a lot of the village things on there, was now it has the village map, and it has the "You are here" icon, and there was also a question about the location, because the original proposed location was you're exiting out of the municipal lot, it would be on your right. So not in the same green as the del boy, but the...
That's not, that's been changed. Now, the plan, as I understand it, is to be on the green near that bench, near the exit.
But it has to be close to the walkway, right, to the disciple?
Yeah, it won't be back into the garden, so...
Between the exit and the restaurant, right?
No, other side. As you're exiting, left.
That's, that's not the last one in the...
All right, let me check.
Yeah, let's just...
Let's just check. And then planning board, obviously, is it Dave Miller? So I would just be looking at him and see if that, as I understood, that was the new, because they didn't want it over there by that rock. But we don't want it over near the Del Boy either.
And if that, did you say it's 3 by 5?
3960 or something, right?
And then with a roof on it, it becomes a pretty good-sized structure at that point. So I think we would want to see all that.
Okay, so we have to work on that, we have to work, maybe we'll go back to the other side, no, will we?
No, nope.
I'm just trying to see that this comes about again, because I think it's a bit...
It's your thing now.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And just to let you know, that's who I am, I'm working on it, and if you want me to take this now, everybody's seen it, and I'll go back up to Dave. Excellent, all right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Victoria, you wanna...
Sure.
...for your presentation?
Hi, evening, I'm Victoria Polidoro, I'm here with my husband, Fred Rowe. He's feeding chicken, and doesn't want to get up. Pun intended. So we're here tonight to ask you to consider amending the village code to allow the keeping of hens as an accessory, non-commercial use. It would just be for personal use, eggs, and I guess companionship for some people. Ryanbeck is a small rural village, so what we propose is a very simple law with a very simple process. It won't require a lot of record keeping or extra work by the building inspector or his own enforcement officer at this point, that's our proposal. But we think that even with the simple process, you can still protect property values. Has everyone had a chance to look at our proposal? Okay. So currently in the village, as you probably know, you allow the keeping of large animals, so I could have a cow, or a horse, or a goat, or a pig, as long as my lot is two acres. There's not that many two-acre lots, but there are some. But even on those big lots, you can't have any hens. And so what we're asking you to do is amend the village code to allow the keeping of hens. We recommend a minimum lot size of 0.25 acres. What that does is it eliminates many of the smaller, narrower, narrower lots. So for example, on the strip of land between South Street and Parsonage, on South Street between Parsonage and Montgomery, where there's a church, and then there's that white Gothic house, only those two lots would be big enough. All of the interior lots would be too small to have chickens. And you know, that's where the concern is, it's the small lots that are close together. We define hen in the law as a female chicken, so that eliminates roosters, peacocks, peahens, anything that makes a lot of noise. So I know a lot of neighbors are concerned about roosters, but they may not be permitted. We've also proposed a limit on the total number of hens, which is five per lot, to allow a little bit of flexibility on some of the bigger lots. Right now, the proposal provides that you could get a special permit for more than five hens, but that person would then have to come in and go through a whole application process if that were the case. But five would be the limit as a rate. And the reason we chose five is that hens are apparently social creatures, and you need at least a small number together for them to generate enough body heat to get through a cold winter, because they stay outdoors. So, a lot of the sites I looked at and people I've spoken to recommend not really going below four or five. As we drafted the law, it also requires that hens have an enclosed shelter and an enclosed pen, and that they be set back at least 15 feet from the property line. Last year, the city of Beacon amended its code to permit up to 12 chickens on the lot. Beacon's law is a little more complex, I mean, you're a city and you have a lot more residents, but it similarly requires a 15-foot setback, and I have copies of Beacon's law. I'll give it to you, okay? Another local municipality that allows chickens is Hyde Park. I mean, there's many municipalities that allow chickens, but usually it's the town and the rural areas. Hyde Park, though, has a tight residential area, that's not a village, but it's village-like as well as a town, and they do allow chickens. They, they regulate it by the pound, which is a little odd, but they have a restriction of it being 250 feet away from the nearest residence. So what that does is it makes it a little more difficult, because you don't just measure from your lot, you have to figure out where the house is on your neighbor's lot. But that's their requirement. Some of the benefits of chickens, that they provide healthier eggs. Backyard chickens lay healthier eggs than what you buy in the store, because they can forage for bugs and there's more nutrients, they're not just eating chicken feed. It's organic pest control, they eat ticks and other bugs. They aerate the soil when they're scratching around, and they provide organic fertilizer for composting. And also, you know, families that have kids like to teach their kid about responsibility and how life works and taking care of chickens. So we're here tonight to see if you have any questions or comments on our proposal and to ask you to set a public hearing on it. I've already had a few people in the village contact me in support of the proposal, and you do set a public hearing, I'd ask them to either come out and support it or give you a letter in support of it. So far, nobody's told me they were against it, but of course, the agenda just came up two days ago, so that's it. So thank you for your time and your consideration, and I'll try to answer any questions that you have.
Share eggs with your neighbors?
Yes.
So Lisa Camp, who's on the Conservation Advisory Board serving the town, she keeps hens, so she'd be happy to come over and tell us her experience sometime.
What's one of the downsides of a chicken?
The downsides? It'd be like any property, if someone's not maintaining their property properly, there could be a nuisance. So what we added in this law is actually a nuisance provision, so that if it really is a hassle, you could go out and enforce it. The same way if anyone has too many dogs, or too many cats, or they're not maintaining their garbage properly. I guess another potential downside would be attraction for other animals, but we think we resolve that by requiring an enclosed pen, and also by requiring the feed to be either indoors or covered with metal tops. That's all I can think of.
What disease?
Disease? I mean, I guess it's a potential, but if you're buying your chickens from reputable dealers, it shouldn't be.
They're dead.
Excuse me?
They are dead, I'm talking about the disease from moving chickens.
You know, I don't know, I'd have to look into that more. Do you want me to look up some information and give it to you?
Sure.
I can do that. Anyone else?
How big of a lot do you have?
Me? I have...
Wee.
Wee? We have almost half an acre.
See, the thing that I'm a little concerned about, because I don't even know if lot size really matters, because we have so many irregular lots, and the length and width are very different from lot to lot to lot. So if you have a long and narrow lot, and some lots are as narrow as 30, you know, 40 feet, it could be 150 or 170 feet long. So when you have a 15-foot setback, but the next house is on the property line, which we have a lot of non-conforming buildings, because we're a historical village, I'm not so sure that that setback, you know, actually can work because of the irregular lot sizes.
Right, well, we did choose 15 feet for that reason, because if you do have a narrow lot, it doesn't give you much room to put the chickens, which means you really couldn't have them, practically speaking. You know, you could recommend a longer setback. I played around in my yard a little bit, and the only thing that happens is that, let's say you have a 30-foot minimum setback, you end up just putting the chicken coop square in the bill, and it looks kind of funny, but I guess it's workable.
When I moved to the village, my backyard neighbor had chickens.
Here?
Yes.
Oh, well, I looked at your lot, and your neighbor would not be allowed to have chickens now.
Yes, they have 0.26 acres.
Are you sure? Do they have two lots combined? I looked, I thought every lot adjoining yours didn't need it, but we can check.
Yeah, I know firsthand what it's like to have chicken...
Did he not maintain them?
Yeah, it wasn't...
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the problem.
And I grew up on a farm, so I'm swayed, but...
Yeah, always some bad apples out there. But I think with a limit of five, it smells really negative out of hand if you're doing regular maintenance.
Have you talked directly to your neighbors?
Yes, my neighbors, well, people just moved out on one side of us, but everyone in our vicinity is supportive as long as there's no roosters. And actually, another neighbor on the street who can't be here tonight also wants to get chickens. So, I mean, there's a lot of interest in it.
Just, you just want to do it so you can have eggs, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't even go out this month and do it, it's just, we haven't put the time and energy into researching it, because it's not allowed right now. So if it was permitted, definitely would work on getting a coop and proper, proper facilities and everything, just raising the eggs. Anyone else?
We have, in the southern part of the village, we have a lot of lots that are 0.25, 0.26, 0.27, and so, they're pretty big-sized houses, you know, sitting, a lot of them sit right in the middle of the lot.
Are you telling that's 13-inch though?
Yeah, 13-inch, right.
That's true. Well, you could up the lot size to 0.4, as long as...
0.57, that's what we...
0.47 is the highest you can go. Yeah, I mean, that's true. It's hard to get a one-size-fits-all bush, but on the other hand, if you wanted to have some complicated permit process where everyone has to come in and do individual measurements, it becomes burdensome on the village.
So why did you choose 0.25 rather than 0.5?
Well, partly because my lot's 0.48.
Okay, why did you choose 0.48?
Well, I don't want this to be, you know, you're just adopting a local law for me and me and you. Yeah, I mean, I looked around, I looked at the village map, and I looked at some of the lots, and a lot of the smaller, narrower lots came under the 0.25 threshold. So to me, it seemed reasonable. Most of the lots that were 0.25 and bigger seemed, at least from the aerial view, when I'm ever living in a public area, from the aerial view, they seemed to have enough room from their neighbors to support chicken coop. So that's why I arrived at that number.
Do you have any other villages that have a similar setup?
I can keep looking, and I can, I only looked in Dutchess County today.
You know, something with a similar population, similar density, you could compare to?
Yeah, I can do that, I can look and send you what I find.
That would be interesting, that'd be good to get some feedback from them, I mean, see it in use.
What's interesting is that it seems, if not the village, the small villages right now that are going towards this, it's the cities, like Brooklyn, Aliza, and Beacon, and some of the more populated areas have the momentum, but I'll look into what I can find.
Where I lived in Greensboro, North Carolina, which is a pretty big city, something of a trend, a few people started it, and people really like chickens, and they do find they're companionable, which I had not experienced myself, but, you know, a lot of people are into it. And, you know, Greensboro, you'd have all the problems we'd have times 20.
Right.
All right, thanks, Victoria.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Can we move on to our department reports? Gary?
Yeah. Okay. April, uh, report for the wastewater department, uh, three point eight zero million gallons treated. Forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-three gallons of sludge processed. And six thousand five hundred and nineteen pounds of sludge, uh, processed. So that's one in pounds and then gallons.
Okay, I got it.
Um, and, um, I'm going for my tour of the plant, so I'll actually know what they're doing down there. For all I know is that you can't smell anything, but I, I'm actually gonna go, uh, see, uh, the process for myself later in the week. Looking forward to that.
Very well. Nice.
Yeah. Morning. We treated eleven million seventy-six thousand gallons of water this month. Uh, we voice down there, we clean the settling tanks and flood tanks in school each. We're trying to clean them a few times a year. Um, we replace the, uh, pre, uh, pre-chlorine with the calcium permanganate. That is to keep the, uh, one, other against the zebromussels away. Uh, we do that, it's a seasonal time for change. I sent engineering specs to, uh, to, to Urban Anthony, uh, to provide us a, uh, a big package for pump control. I brought that last, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And he was supposed to get a, uh, a big package back by June sixth. I started with the evaluation of remedial options, so to see what we can do, uh, to in case of a flooding of our low lift station, uh, that we don't get put out of service. The last time we had, uh, Sandy, uh, we had a flood that came within about three or four feet elevation to the, uh, low lift station. And, uh, it would have gone, you know, the low lift station, the pump sitting about twelve feet down in the, in the ground, and it would have flooded. And then there's all those electrical switches and so on. And so at some point, uh, we don't want to stop. And it may take us a little while if it didn't, not only just the, the electric switches, but also some of the controls that have to be moved. Uh, as far as the water distribution system is concerned, we repaired a main break, uh, at Henney at Thirty-Foot Guard Avenue, uh, last couple of weeks ago, a week ago. Uh, I completed flow and pressure testing in line drift. I tested about fifteen pairs of, of hens. Uh, we need to wish two hens to do that, one of them to pressure the flow, and the other one to report the, uh, residual pressure and the static pressure. During the, uh, the flow test, we found only four of them that exceeded expectations. And we actually had to abandon two of the flow tests because the hens blew up. Uh, by, by the high pressure, they couldn't take the, uh, the pressure. And, uh, we, uh, we checked nine others. And there the flow and, uh, and pressure were below expectations. Uh, we replaced one of the hens that blew up on Orchard, Kelly Street. And we're gonna replace three more in the next, uh, month or year, so. Planning some distribution improvements. Uh, the data on the village and the town flow, pressure tests, line breaks, history, and, uh, and so on, was sent to, uh, and, and some of the failures in the last two years, all that information, I have, have a book on that, was sent to Urban Anthony to, uh, uh, provide us a, uh, sort of a precursor of, uh, what, what it is that we want to do uh, with, with our distribution system here. And, and we need to do that, we need to do that because the, uh, in order to go for, for money, we have to have some kind of conceptual idea of what we want to do with the, uh, uh, distribution system. I expect that, uh, preliminary process to be done sometime in the next week. I think we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have some meeting of the committees about, uh, about the sidewalks with, with, uh, the man here. Anything about that?
Sorry, the accessible car, car sidewalks?
Yeah, that's probably what happened. And during that time, I probably made a comment about the, uh, the process for a conceptual plan, uh, for the distribution system.
Right. The bid opening, it's supposed to be next week?
Yeah. Um, want to talk about the electrical power reduction issue that we have taken, and, uh, we had a pretty good month. People sent to all of this, and we have that. And that is the, uh, the results from our, uh, solar panels up there. Uh, we generated about twenty-eight hundred kilowatt-hours, twenty-eight fifty-two actually. And, uh, consumed thirty-four hundred. Uh, so, uh, that's pretty good. We saved about six hundred dollars.
Vince?
Yeah.
The solar panels, you said, I recommended that you clean once in a while?
Yeah, that's locked. But it just holds them off.
With some kind of solution, right? Just holds them off?
Just, yeah.
Okay.
My give, clean by God. Used to, yeah, but mine are on the land.
And these are too?
One, not the ones on the, in the center of the roof there, they're lying flat from what I have seen.
No, they're up a little bit.
Okay, they're lifted?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no release going on, right?
No.
Just us.
Yeah. We'd go inspect it if anywhere, right? You would go look at it.
Yeah. If you use the roof dusting as well, which is really the pressure basis, it's, it's, uh, we might use any solutions.
Okay. Heinz has, uh, solar panels on his, on his own roof at home, so I think you're the expert at that.
They work.
Yeah.
They had, they had a good month.
Fire? We, we don't have the call, um, report for this month, but do you want to talk about the truck and anything else?
Sure. I mean, uh, over the last couple of weeks, I've been participating in, uh, different discussions about, uh, how to proceed with the, the need for a, a new truck and, and different options with that. And whether or not we should, uh, proceed with the repair of the existing truck. There's lots of differing, uh, opinions, and quite frankly, uh, they're all, they're all pretty good, um, from, uh, not repairing the truck and remaining on mutual aid. Of which is perfectly fine for a certain amount of time. Or, uh, spending this eighteen thousand dollars, uh, and, and repairing the truck and putting it back into service and, and hoping that it lasts while the truck committee specifies the truck that they want, finds the truck that they want, comes to this board and gets approval or receives approval for that for us to be able to finance a new truck for the next year. So there's a, there's a couple of different options on the table. I, I'm not sure whether there's anything finalized as of yet. Whether there's any real decision to make. I think we need to probably have one final meeting with the, with the fire department. And get their, maybe their final opinion of how they'd like to proceed. But right now, they presented at least a need with some option. I'm not ready to bring the final. You've had this similar discussion.
I've heard many different opinions on the, on the right way to proceed. Basically, the, the first line engine is out of service. It's been that way for a couple of weeks. Needs a, uh, an engine rebuild to the tune of eighteen thousand dollars, but it's already twenty-six years old. And prior to the, the breakdown of, it's already talks, you know, there's a committee to replace it. Um, you know, we haven't committed the funding, of course, to replacing it, but the plan was to replace it. The normal lifespan is twenty years. It's at twenty-six. And it's, uh, it has limited to no value for resale.
And besides that, it, it's out of compliance with, with N F P A. There's lots of updates that need to take place with it. It's certainly usable and serviceable in tandem with some of the other trucks that we have if we decide to take that route.
So the plan, uh, that's, the next plan?
Yeah, I think, I've been soliciting, you know, the differing opinions, and I've participated in some of the other, they've had some demonstration trucks here over the last couple of weeks, and they've been looking at different vendors and really trying to figure out exactly what type of truck and what options they want on their truck. So I, I don't think they themselves have finalized what it is that they're looking for when they decide to replace the truck. So I think it's just a matter of bringing together all the different ideas and putting it in the next two weeks.
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
Question would be, does relying on mutual aid involve, are we taking a risk going into the summer? If, if, if there are a lot of, uh, responses required?
We still have the rescue truck.
You have an answer?
Yeah, we have the number two engine and we have the rescue truck. So, you know, from what I understand, we could, we could do it until, you know, it can take a year once you've ordered the truck for it to be built and delivered. So we could potentially survive that period with, you know, with an empty bay downstairs. One of the bigger questions is, what are we gonna get to replace it? Because, you know, we don't have the expertise to make that determination, and there's many opinions as to what the best replacement truck is, and, you know, one of the newer vehicles downstairs. There's a lot of people feel that it was, it's not the right truck. But we have it, and it's, hasn't been there that long. So we want to try to avoid making a decision that they're not happy with five years from now. So I know I mentioned before, but there is a, there is a service, a company that can, it's, you know, consulting basis, that can draw the plan. A twenty, thirty-year plan that would say, well, look at the current fleet and say, this is what you have. This is what you need to service the village. This is what you need to service the town protective district. And this is what you should buy today. This is what you should buy in five years. This is when you should replace it. So, yeah.
And that's about forty-five hundred dollars for that service, for that, for that plan to be drafted.
Is that something you want to pursue?
I think it's seeming, it's seeming like it's maybe more and more a good idea because, you know, they've, they've had the committee and they've been looking at, he, you know, I talked to the gentleman. He's had some ideas about possibly repurposing the truck that nobody likes downstairs, maybe will not cost all that much, you know, it wouldn't cost the full, so.
Half a million dollars?
I seem to remember these discussions were going on for.
A while.
Quite a while.
Yeah.
A year, year or two.
Pretty much.
Mm-hmm. And to get some kind of closure on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the, um, expenditure for the fleet assessment and fleet plan.
I said enough.
At forty-five hundred. And any more discussion?
Do they, you have any idea how long that would take them to do that?
I don't have a, yeah. But we would wait on any purchase and any repair until we're able to move forward with that. So that would give us a, you know, put everything on hold for the moment and get them working on it and see what his recommendation would be.
And what does that proposal include?
It includes, uh, an assessment of what we, uh, what we have now, and then a detailed plan of what we need moving forward to serve the community based on, you know, here we have the hydrant district, which has different needs than the protective district without any hydrants. So that's where you need a certain number of gallons in the tanker and certain, you know, flow, uh, rates of the pumps. So, and he, he offers some other services too about, in terms of the, uh, I S O ratings, which affects the homeowner's insurance. We should talk about that forward. That's not included in this. That's more, you know, filing of, you know, forms with different agencies. I don't know all the details of it, but I don't know that it would affect us here as much in the village. That was something that would more benefit the town because their I S O rating is high. I think it's a nine, and I think that's not as high as it goes because they're not served by hydrants. But here, um, we are in pretty good shape. I think we could approve it by a little bit, which would offer, um, a benefit to all the homeowners in the village because of the fact they're.
I find it worth the sacrifice.
I'm just gonna say, if we, if we approve that consultant's work.
Yeah.
What, what, like, what will I tell the fire department? How, how they should proceed should they?
Yeah, I mean, they can continue with their, with their truck and their efforts. Yeah, they're gonna do it regardless. But we give maybe them a, uh, you know, framework to work within. And, you know, help us objectively look at what the recommendation is coming.
Maybe you can help guide them.
Yeah, and he's worked with them in the past. I mean, I didn't find him myself. He came through the, through the fire department, so.
We've got a brilliant non-starter idea. Should we ask the town to pay for part of the study since, uh, we'll have to study the town's situation as well as ours?
If you're gonna cool them.
Yeah, it'll go, yeah, it'll go into the budget, so they'll pay their, their piece. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Street?
Yes, you want to talk about the contract? Uh, what's that?
We can talk about that later, right? The contract negotiation for, for everyone.
Okay. So let's go on to street then, Doug.
Okay, brush picks up. Brush pickups have been down on the north and south side, and, um, the guys pick up the brush from the Hang Street every week. Even on Thursday or Friday before the weekend. The town will sweep our roads when the brush is picked up again, but I believe we should do that right before the parade. Maybe next week. When's, when's Memorial Day?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Okay, it's coming on.
Monday, the twenty-fourth, Memorial Day, ten o'clock, the parade kicking off at the Fairgrounds.
Right. Yeah. Okay, the parks have been cleaned and mowed. And the tree committee planted trees after Tom of the, uh, street department. And Mike is saying here, he's a committee of one. He, uh, dug the holes in the back hole. So we thank Tom Johnson for doing that. Uh, Mike called around for bids for the tree work that still has to be done. There's about six or seven trees that have to be cut down. Uh, only one company called back so far. And the problem he's having is because we usually use the one guy who's the lowest bidder, nobody else wants to bid anymore, so. Any thoughts on that? Should there be a time limit of, uh, how long to wait?
Do they give us, uh, is it a labor rate they charge, or is it just a?
You got the.
Uh, tree, or is he looking at the tree in the term?
In the past, he's done like, he looks at five or six trees and he gives us a rate. That's what the other guys were doing too.
Yep.
But now the tree committee wants them to, to kind of do a per-tree basis, so we know how much it costs for certain trees to come down, which he agreed to do.
The, the vendor?
The vendor took, yes.
I, I had a same situation. I had to tree-sell in the water plant. They said, oh, and he came in low with it quite a bit.
Yeah. But why, why can't we, you know, contract, you know, commit to a rate, and then when we have trees, we can just go to that, we knew that was. Do we have to go out to bid on every tree, or can we go out to bid?
We gotta, uh, comply with your procurement law, because if you're under thirty thousand dollars, or if you're gonna do it on lump sum, you're gonna have to bid.
On every tree?
Well, procurement, I mean, it depends on how much you're gonna be spending. It's in the budget.
Well, definitely under thirty thousand.
Yeah, the budget is, 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 uh, fifteen thousand for the year, but, so I mean, you're under that. You know, you should, you should at least make the phone calls and of course procurement policy. He does that, but we just, we were waiting, so we don't want to keep waiting.
Well, we could just go in and say, give us a per-tree rate and get multiple bids on that, and then let that run for the year or some of that. Okay. Okay. Then we wouldn't have to do it every time.
Right.
What about the per-tree? It's expensive, the kind of trees.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a tree.
Well, it sounds like you're willing to do that, though.
Well, no, no, he, what he does is he looks at each tree.
All right, that's what I thought.
The wires, they take a little bit longer and.
All right. Um, continue like we have that.
Okay, so I, what about if we put a week limit on it?
I think that's fair.
Okay.
I, I want to make, I want to make a commendation to both of you that planted these trees. I think you did a wonderful job.
And we were looking for you, but we couldn't find you.
Well, I was, I came back on Saturday, on Wednesday morning, on Wednesday night, and I saw all these beautiful trees lined up in, in various streets, and, uh, I thought it had really enhanced, and they, they did a really great job. How many did you?
See, I'm believing. A fine walk, I walked it low, but Howie has stolen my thunder.
Well, no, I said, oh, no.
I'm kidding, but he was, and Grant Ruemaker, uh, was out there helping. It was, it was fantastic.
Twenty-eight trees.
We had quite a few volunteers, a lot of trees. And Ruby, we wanna thank them for providing the truck, we had a little trouble with it this time and they were embarrassed and he said, no, you know, you're helping us out, we appreciate it, but the mulch truck stopped, so.
It stopped in a good spot, though.
But we had to do it by wheelbarrow, and they had the mulch rolling trees.
Yeah, you'd like to thank Ruby's for donating the truck, it's a dump truck, and he says, anytime you need it, it's ours.
And I was gonna say that just Tom Johnson also, in addition to spending all day with us the night before digging the holes, he also provided his flatbed, without which we would have been in big trouble, so he went considerably beyond the call of duty.
Right. Okay, we demoed a grapple truck for brush pickup, it worked okay, we could find a use for it.
I was looking for another list, yeah, we do, oh, it's stuck in there.
Yes.
I do have two quotes on that, two different manufacturers waiting, on a third one, but since you brought it up, we do, we just did spend, almost eight thousand repair and backhoe, we got another backhoe that's out again.
Yeah, that's why the brush hasn't been picked up in the last week. This, the grapple truck is a one-man operation, it's a truck that has a plow on it, picks up the brush, puts it right in the back of the dump, there's a dump part in the back of the truck. And we feel it would be a lot more efficient to use that instead of using two backhoes and three or four dump trucks and five or six guys. Yeah. So Heath, where Heath used to live before, that was an operation, it's something new, I never saw anything like this before, but thank you Heath for introducing this grapple truck to us. Last month Heath and I and Mike Wolf of the highway department went up to Troy and North Green Bush and looked at, there's an operation. So we got a few ideas on it. It's a pretty clean pickup, too, once they get used to it.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike says the street department needs a small dump truck with a plow, and it would be also used for pulling the Bobcat trailer, he says his half-ton truck that they have now is too light for that use, we're still talking about that one.
We are.
Well, when we bought the Bobcat, it was just a question of having a trailer, was ever a question, that we needed a truck to pull the dump thing.
Right.
So what happened?
Well, the truck is not just to pull the Bobcat, they did have a pickup truck that was not replaced last year, so that Mike has recommended that this time, instead of getting another pickup truck, it'd be a dump truck, which would be more versatile. Like a pickup.
So it's not driven by the Bob, by pulling the Bobcat, you have something else that's to pull the Bobcat?
Yeah, we have another truck, we can pull the Bobcat.
The smallest dump truck.
This is a sales pitch here.
This would be smaller than the currently smallest dump truck. It's like one of the ones you see in the landscape, the town has one in parks out here, on the street a lot, like that one. So I've been helping out.
We look into used options. Yeah, we can get the Bobcat around without purchasing a truck.
Or we can't get the Bobcat around and something else or.
Well, we could, if they wanna use a Bobcat like for stump, it could be dropped off in a certain area, then they could go use the truck for something else, you know.
So where are we gonna go with this?
Well, we're looking for a used one. Yeah, yeah.
We had a couple, they also.
We also need one for a fellow who works here, so is there a plan to go with the small truck, the guy?
Well, I wanted to bring that up, but do you know, is there any discussion about the truck down at the sewer department, have you been down there really? Has it been only, when we were there last, okay, so, they have a truck, the waste water department has a truck that's, they replaced it with a new one, I think in December, and since then, the old one has been sitting there, it needs brake repairs, so, but apparently, once it has the brakes, it's okay, it has a plow with it, so my suggestion would be to bring it here to the village hall for our maintenance worker to have, and it has a plow, we could use to plow around here in the winter.
Well, I spoke to Anthony, he doesn't wanna give it up.
Right, that's a given, but we have a precedent set that they didn't need it from December to May, so.
And does it work, did we speak last time about sharing it?
Yeah, I told him, you know, I asked why he needed the second truck and he said, well, they need to get oil changed on the first one, they need something to drive to the, to the repair place to bring the guy back, I said, well, you can swim by here and borrow the truck from the maintenance worker here, you know, you can borrow the truck for the day, and also possibly the building inspector could drive the truck when he went out on inspection, so it'd be kind of a, you know, overflow, because he doesn't put a lot of miles on John here, the maintenance worker, comes up to him, it's over here and there, but.
Yeah, Anthony needs it to connect.
Yeah, over here and there.
Yeah.
And then they'll probably be due for, you know, maybe they can get a second one in a couple of years, so they have two decent ones. So the question is, how do we, how does the village general fund purchase it from the sewer department?
The sewer department can donate it to me.
Can it?
Sure.
Just between the funds?
Yeah, I mean, can we just take it, it's owned by the village.
Okay.
Uh, it is owned by the sewer department, which is funded.
For the vehicle?
Yes, and that's funded by a special, you know, people in the sewer, so.
Is it fully appreciated at this point?
What year is it?
Sorry, I'll find out more when I go over there later in the week, but.
How many years does it take to fully appreciate the vehicle? I think the IRS rates are like three to five.
It's fully appreciated. Yeah.
It would live here.
Yes.
But I can tell Anthony that when he had those rare occurrences, when his other truck was being worked on, he gets it.
Yeah, yeah, well, just make a phone call.
Exactly, so we don't need to do anything special, we can just make that, thank you Rich.
So we're talking about a shared.
Yes.
Service.
Primary assignment would be here at the village hall, and then the airs come out of the building, building department, the building municipal.
So we can tell them that he won't have to take repairs out of his budget.
No, he won't have to take repairs.
We're gonna charge him per mile, give him a ride, though.
That's right.
Yeah.
I'll leave that in.
The other thing that we could use the truck for, since we're talking about it, is John could go around the village and empty the garbage bins with it.
Yes.
So. Is there something about putting the back of that to receive garbage, some sort of bin, some sort of bigger can? They just put green bags?
Yeah, the bags go into the big bellies.
They bring the garbage out to the village highway department, there's a dumpster out there.
Yeah, they take cans around with them, they take like a.
Some of them don't have lighters.
Yeah, they take like a thirty-five gallon, a pair of them out in the back of the truck and fill it, you know, empty a little basket, something like that.
Okay, catch basin work is underway out there on three oh eight by the mobile station, they fixed the catch basin out there, the one on south and center right over here, Seymour and Lorraine Drive and Kramer Road and Blacktop has been completed on some of the main basins. Patching and repairs of the roads will go on until the fall, the milling attachment on this famous Bobcat that we keep talking about says it works great, and it makes for a smooth transition from the old road to the new road. That's Mike, Mike mills out the old, makes it a smooth thing, so.
Nice job.
So the blacktop adheres.
Yeah, center right there, yeah.
Okay, one of the back hoses down again, waiting on parts, mulch sales are good, but there are a lot of complaints about going to the office to pay. What we did last year was instituted a system where whoever's buying mulch comes to the office first and pays and then gets a receipt and brings it out to the highway department. Just wanna have more control over that.
So who's the, who's the complaint?
Some of the customers, because they used to just go out there and get the mulch, but now they have to come here, once they get used to it, it should be okay.
Just, I don't know, if they're doing, if they're getting pickup, they obviously have to take the slip out to the highway department. But if they're gonna get it delivered, they don't need to deliver the slip themselves to the highway department, Michael picked it up here.
Okay.
So it's a one-stop if you're getting it delivered, they deliver it to the village.
So far, so good with maintaining the water level of the dam when the storms hit, now that's, what he's talking about there is we have newly installed valves a few years ago at the bottom of the dam, and we open them up and we see that the weather's gonna be a lot of rain, and we're trying to maintain that level of water for the back of the, the Lenzman's kill that goes out here around three oh eight, so we watch the weather, Heath and I and Mike Wolf, we brainstorm on when to open up the valves, so there's gonna be a lot of rain this Friday, so we're gonna have to look at that this Friday, before this Friday, by Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah.
The dam assessment team.
Yeah, the dam assessment team.
That's it, any questions? Oh, I, yes, go ahead, I got a couple highway questions.
Asher Road, we plan on paving Asher Road this year, chip spawns, where are we at with that, was, we didn't put that in, did, right?
Go ahead, check in Tom, he was right there, right?
Yeah.
He said he's gonna start on it, but we need an engineering plan for it.
Right.
We had had the garbage truck went out to bid a while back and we talked about possibly repurposing it into a grapple truck, and I think that's probably, you know, the better option would be to go to a complete unit, so we did have one offer for the truck, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the offer from Hackers Packers to sell the garbage truck, fifteen thousand.
Same.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about the municipal lot over here in terms of lighting, you guys have a chance to look at it, buddy?
I was trying to figure out what you were talking about. I'm down to that lot over there.
When you go from the upper lot into the lower lot, you know, there's one light post, and then between there and where the shed is, the back of the property, the north side of the property, there's no lights, but there is a pole that has power to it, there's something going on, so. We have a separate fund that was, and we were parking for businesses, so we have money available to maintain that lot, so one of the, you know, the question is, do we wanna put another light pole in there, kind of match it up with the other side, so. We put up eight poles in the past and ones are out there now, they have the nice stonework at the bottom, and then for the eight poles, it's about twenty thousand dollars, I think. It's three contractors above, you know, so.
Is there an issue with lighting, or is it just an issue that we have an area that used to be a light area?
Well, I think we gotta look at night, I mean, I looked in the day, there's, it's not like it's pitch black there, but it's not lit like the rest of it is, and if you're parked in the back of the lot, some people go down over that, you know, grassy knoll down into the other lot to cut over to the businesses, so, you know, maybe wanna put a couple steps in there and a light, I'm not sure.
But is there one missing, or you were not sure if there ever was?
There was something there, but it hasn't been there for a while.
So should we just look tonight again?
Yes.
Field trip.
Field trip afterwards.
Okay, they're all in.
It goes on the agenda.
Okay.
Pardon all that. Yes, and another question about the, I sent an email about it, about the barriers around the trees to keep the mulch in specifically in front of, you know, the hardware store, they're the ones that have the bricks that go on the angle, and they got tore up last year with the snow rule, so they repaired them, and our solution was for them to put posts up, they put posts up and they were damaged again in the snow rule, so, you know, I don't know what, if there should be some kind of guideline as to what can be used and what should not be used and.
One of the problems, I think, is they build up, build up the soil and then the roots come up with it, and, you know, they build them up so you can put some flowers in there and so on, but this is just a whole kind of trees to do that.
I, you know, I don't wanna discourage anyone, because those are pretty nice, those are some of the nicest planning beds in the village. I don't wanna really discourage people from doing that, is there any way to be more careful with the snow rule, I mean, the snow rule, like it's not, I don't know how the tree committee feels, but if you look at the trees, the trees are all banged up and marred up and such too, and so, you know, I saw the damage, it's unfortunate, because those are some, those are some of the nicest.
Yeah.
Well, we went through this two years ago and told everybody to be careful, same thing happened again, so. They're in a hurry, there's a lot of snow there, they don't, you know, really know, remember what's where and.
Who's removed the snow there?
Well, it could be the village, it could be the private contractors we hire, there's some people that, you know, we have three, three of those, what's it called, the thing we just talked about?
Bobcats?
Yeah, Bobcats, we have ours and there's two other down there from a couple other.
So we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. We think Jefferson.
Can the snow removal people be more careful?
I, well, it's hard, I mean, when you have four feet of snow, I mean, it's, is what it is.
So there's some arguments of leave, just leave the snowbank that's there, you know, we don't have to scrape it down to the, every inch of hardscape, but, you know, or maybe we could come up with a standard as to what kind of material to use so it doesn't get torn up.
At the beginning of every winter, let's send a letter out to all the people who are doing that for us.
If I remember what they've done there, is they put the stone on the outside, and then in the inside, closer to the, closer to the tree, they had metal, I think metal parts, I think, if anything, should do, just the other way around.
Put the metal one in.
Put the metal on the outside rather than the inside.
The metal one in after, to try to protect, you know, their thought was if the blade lands on the antique brick, it's gonna break, but if it lands on the metal, scrape across the top.
But you know, I don't think there's anything that's gonna hold up to it, you know, when you're using a backhoe or some of this heavy equipment, it's gonna tear just about everything up. The only way to really be a hundred percent certain is to make sure that everything is lower than the plane of the sidewalk, and, you know, as it is, those, like you said before, those. Yeah.
I mean, that's what, you can throw it at the church, the church, and step high, you know, it just keeps them going.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing we could do is just, you know, if they're gonna do planes like that, make sure that they mark, you know, only at the beginning of the season.
Yeah, the big driveway markers. All right. How about the request for another catch basin?
Well, it is sixty-five to sixty-seven on that road, Mike wants to look at it after there's some rain, after some water on the ground. I went over there and looked at it, there was a small rain fall, and there is a little water that collects there, but Mike thinks he can blacktop over there so that it'll raise that whole area so the water will go onto the lawn.
Okay, what number are you here?
Seventy-nine, on the other side of the hallway.
Oh. I just saw the puddle in front of your house there, I thought maybe it was your neighbor.
Howie, what about that catch basin on Route nine and on Chestnut, where the church is, that is, that is a.
Yeah, Mike supposedly had looked at that one too, I mentioned that to him. The covers come loose over the winter and it's actually turned on metal, it's a shrimp.
Right by the church.
Right on the.
Yeah. How about the stop signs at the end of Parsonage?
This came up a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
We put in one of.
That's Parsonage and Platte.
Platte. And then you have fairgrounds right there.
Yeah.
This can't hurt, I mean. This can't hurt. I mean, we have four-way stops all over the place. And the fact is, is that this, it's potentially a four-way stop, but on the other side of the stop, it just goes to the fairgrounds. It's a short eighth of a block. I think it stops people and they're able to look ahead and see that.
So the business stops out there now?
No.
Okay.
The only thing I'm concerned about is the fair. Everybody's gonna stop there. It's gonna cause more traffic to back up.
Well, I heard one suggestion about the ones that are on the edge. Their fair is a traffic company and you just drop it down.
Oh, okay. But would you, would you necessarily put one coming out of the fair? No, no, this is, I think they just want one that faces the fair. Right? It's not really, it's more than be a three-way stop. No, no, I'm just saying that the way, the way you described the fair traffic, I was wondering about fair, people coming out of the fair. Would they, if they're coming out of the fair, would they stop at the flat intersection?
So then we put up a stop sign apparently. We put up a sign that said, "The road ends." So maybe just put a stop sign. And then...
Put a stop bar into, I think, the road.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I'm agree with it.
Are we gonna, Parsonage and South? And I know the board's had this discussion before about that, where it's, there's no stop coming up Parsonage from the south. You always have the right of way coming in that direction.
With the blinking light is?
Right. And it just...
I have the answer on that one.
You do?
Yes. So the reason why it's one-way...
Accident because of the buses?
The school buses. School buses, like eighty percent of them come down southbound, down south of Parsonage off of East Market. So that's why they opened it up one-way and there's no stop sign there.
I think at that point it has been accidents.
Well, it seems inevitable that there would be...
Yeah. The history, there is no historical record of accidents at that site. No, I've checked, I checked into it. Yes.
Well, two buses stopped at the, if that was a stoplight, if there was two buses stopped and they were in front of the deli, that means there could be five in, on Market Street.
They'd be honest, they, they wrote, there would be a problem. That's the justification of why it happened that way.
That's the only intersection I'm, I'm always scared. I may end up stopping anyway.
A lot, I've seen more and more people stop there anyway.
So do we have to approve this other stop sign? Do we have to make a, make a motion?
Stop signs under your traffic laws, so the local law, you have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, we gotta have a public hearing.
Well, that certainly hasn't happened in the past.
Yes, it has.
Every stop sign in the village?
We're unacting this here.
All right. Let's do it. I feel like I've seen stop signs.
I mean, I think you would, I think you would, different times discuss to achieve about some amendments to the vehicle traffic section.
Could we have it be more than one site? Cause I've had a couple residents talk to me about Parsonage and South. It would be good for them to hear if their knives change and now, here that, could we address that at the same time in a public hearing?
Sure. Well, I guess we gotta come up with a list of potential changes and...
A lot of changes concerning water.
Oh, no, not, not for the traffic code. All right.
We'll probably do that at a regular meeting, right?
Yeah.
So you'll have the list by the next meeting?
I don't think we have a deadline on it. We'll begin to compile the list of requested, yeah, signage changes. Do you guys have anything for planning and zoning?
Well, I, you have your report in front of you. I don't know what, in the past, what has been written off the report. It won't be linked here. I will say that, you know, John put together a, a letter and a, a planning and zoning and building department report. He also has provided us with a new fee schedule for the new, or to get us more in line with some of the other municipalities. As far as building department, so building permit fees and renovation fees and planning and zoning application fees. So you've seen this before?
That's...
Yeah, I think we should first.
Oh, because he says in his letter, this is, this, it says in the, in the, in his report, he says, "I've also attached a fee schedule." That was closed at the reorganization meeting.
Yes. I asked him to formalize it, you know, put it on Rhinebeck letterhead. It was kind of a cut and paste before, so.
You went to see, we didn't see it, I heard it.
Right, right. Well, that's what he, and that, and when I read this, I was surprised too. And this is the first that I've seen it, so I wasn't sure if you guys had seen it before.
So we can review it and we're probably gonna be back together next week and...
Do we have a public hearing on this? Change the fee schedule?
No, your code provides that you can review and adopt resolution, adopt the fees.
All right.
So what I would ask you folks is to review this. I, I, you know, I'm oftentimes in, in different municipalities and, and know the different fee schedules for them. And it is now more in line with some of our surrounding towns and villages. But you guys take a look at it. Give me some feedback if you have any. And maybe next meeting, we can... He also has a proposal here too. He spoke to Kevin Asher about some of the false alarm calls. Apparently they go on a lot of false alarm calls, the fire call. He's also attached a, the code from the village of Wopra Falls and how they address these type of issues. So he put that in there as an opportunity for us to maybe look at this and see if this is something that we wanna include in our, in our, in our code. The, there are also here the monthly fees report of the different fees that have been collected for CO searches. Four hundred and fifty dollars for that. Five hundred and sixty-five dollars for building permits. A hundred and fifty for certificate of occupancies that were issued. Sign application fees of a hundred and fifty dollars. Site application fees of five hundred. And a planning board discussion fee of a hundred that's collected in the month we have. Just one last thing that I'd like to bring before this board is I participated in two of the last planning board meetings. And there were some issues that came up and that we may wanna look into is updating our planning and zoning codes. When I was part of the planning and zoning board, probably seven years ago, and then the village board, we had assembled a subcommittee to take a look at our planning and zoning codes and maybe address some of the things that needed to be updated. So over the years and since I've left and different boards have been in place, different subcommittees were together and have addressed different parts. I don't think it ever came to fruition and was ever finalized. So when I was at the planning board meeting, the, the board brought that to my attention. And some of the people who had looked at this and been a part of these subcommittees said that they'd be interested in continuing on, continuing on with this. And maybe bring before this board some, some changes that they've been, maybe necessary. So I'd like to get together with, with zoning board and planning board and maybe start this going again.
And Brantnernecker was working on some changes and has continued to pursue that and put something together in writing, so we'll have that.
So you can get a, a, a waiver from the zoning board, over from the planning board, you guys?
Yeah, there's two from each.
Okay.
And then liaisons. At the time, I was the liaison to both, but, but, so maybe Gary and I, two from each of those. And we can maybe get all of the information that had been gathered over time. Quick looks until after the vote and then a new stuff.
Okay. What do you think would be a timeline to, you know, not just get the committee together, but to come up with a proposal for all the changes? So that we could, you know, actually, you know, have the hearing and amend the code?
I don't know about the planning board. I know, I think Brant is fairly far along. He was moving to do this. He was hoping to do it before he left the board. So in terms of his recommendations for zoning, we, we wouldn't need much time on it. Whether planning or people, I have a feeling they already have a pretty good idea too.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know the work that Brant's done, so maybe it's all inclusive, maybe it's all of that. So I, I guess before we can answer, at least before I can answer, is I think we'd like to see what, what's been done and maybe get up to you after that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to tie the general code in there with it, cause, you know, we had some feedback on the personnel portion of our general code. Everything that's in that, which has. Make it all right. Anything else? All right. So I have the police report. They went on ninety-one calls last month. They issued one hundred and three tickets. Did you get one? And they would just wanted to issue a reminder about parking in the crosswalks. I believe it's twenty feet or twenty-two feet or, anyway, the yellow curves and there's signs that say, "No parking from here." So that becomes a problem when the village becomes more congested, especially on the weekends over the summer. So please don't park in the, no parking zones. Those are for accessible crossing the roadway. And also a reminder, I know we just had the first outdoor day for the farmer's market, but the no parking zone in the rear of the lot. I don't, I guess it went okay on, on Sunday. But usually every year when it starts up, requires a reminder not to park back there. Cause lots of tow cars to let the market continue. They had a, on April thirtieth, they had a walk-through on the police station over there. They have a punch list of repairs to be made that came under, under warranty. Coming upon the end of the first year. So a number of things that need to be addressed back there. That's all I got. There's no dog report?
So from, what do you wanna say there, Scott?
Well, go ahead.
I was gonna say something to the effect that, I think I mentioned it to Howie, but I, the, I was out early the other morning and I happened to be joined by some landscapers right in early in the morning with blowers and mowers. And it was just, just six o'clock. And I was really surprised to hear that kind of noise that early. And so after I finished my walk with my dogs, I went back and got our code book out and said, geez, there must be some sort of noise ordinance in there that doesn't allow that type of noise that early in the morning. And I went through the book and I was surprised to find that there wasn't. And that there's a noise ordinance, but there is no limits to where and where the noise can take place. And I wonder if this board would be interested in maybe taking a look at that and seeing if maybe...
Is it, there's something in there where it's vague about being disruptive. It doesn't have a ton of...
It's kinda tough to, to settle on a decibel level.
But I think maybe activity wise, I mean, it just seems...
Maybe start time?
Yeah.
A different day, you know?
And I actually thought that at seven AM to ten, ten PM, that, you know, that was disruptive noise. And I, I lived that way for many years, just knowing that that was the, was what I thought it was. And it just, it's not...
That includes the garbage bunch which comes in at seven, seven in the morning.
I don't know if you've, I know you probably haven't received any complaints because definitely...
We haven't received complaints.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
I don't think seven AM is unreasonable.
Maybe seven during the week. Yeah, general construction, seven AM is start time. Weekends, was it nine on a weekend maybe, Sunday?
Well, someone looks to mow their lawn or do their own thing. I think seven AM is just to be able to mow all the way around.
How about the tree commission? Do we cover everything there?
No, there's one other item. We have to do some of the Emerald Ash Borer treatment has to be done by the end of May or very early in June in order to be effective. It's called, the project is called Triage, I believe. But anyway, the tree commission got two estimates. And one seems to be moving, one estimate, and it came in and now he's offering a lower price. So it needs to be done. Howie, you said you thought there was, I, I don't see anything in the budget that addresses this particular thing.
I forget how many trees there are. There might be six or seven trees. And one of them was on the property where Mr. David Silver put those lots in to the right of the village green. And he donated some money towards this. I don't remember exactly. I don't know if you know. We'd have to look that up.
So I don't know, how to word a motion that would approve the lowest bid. Right now, the, the bids are, one is a little over a thousand, one's about fourteen hundred. But we're still negotiating.
For how many trees? For how many trees?
That's seven?
I think six or seven trees. It has to be done in so many years. This might be the last treatment.
And we have to have the, the firm estimate?
The risk is if, if you don't do it, then not only are those trees put at risk, but the Emerald Ash Borer can do, you know, additional damage.
When does, when do they recommend that this be done by?
By the end of the month or early June is what Cicely Tyson, Cicely Fraser, she's great. Cicely Fraser said.
Well, we're gonna have a meeting next week, he said.
Probably.
So it went out to bid and you got received bid.
Right. But, but they're negotiating. So we can either say right now that we would, I, I'm sorry, that we would accept the lower, lower bid. But I don't have, I can figure that out. It's about one, one thousand seventy-five. No, ninety-five, one thousand ninety-five. She didn't give me the fair, subtracting. Is the lowest bid right now, so we can vote to approve that. But I think she was still negotiating, so it's a possibility we could save a few more dollars. So.
I wonder if you need next week?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know we keep talking about next week. We have a bid opening for the accessible crosswalks. That's tentatively scheduled for the twentieth, a week from today. That's why we keep throwing around this potential meeting for next week. So put on the agenda for next week, tentatively. Nothing on the website? You have anything on that, Pat? All going well?
Is it possible for me to have, say something about the website?
Of course.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Chip, what's the... I'm following your farm. I live at one thirty-two East Market Street. And I have some requests about the website. I understand that the town is gonna come out with a new website shortly. And it would seem to me that it would make perfect sense for the village and the town to once again have only one website instead of two. For the first six or seven years that the town and village had a website, it was one website. And it uses a dot G O V extension, which anybody who looks at it knows that that's a genuine government website. When you see dot org, you don't know whether it's a private website or really a government website. But it would make sense because I don't see why, as a resident of the village, I'm paying for a website in the village and I'm paying for a website in the town where a lot of the information is the same. Also, it's always been my belief, and I think it's still true, that many people don't really understand, people who live here, the difference between the town and the village. So again, to have one website, one place to go, and then when you're there, you say it would be really handy to be able to put in your address. And have it come back and say, well, you're in the town or you're in the village, so you wanna go look at this in this case. You know, the assesses are for everybody, the buildings, the inspectors, we have different ones. And that brings up another question. When you put it together, if we're one website, one website, you'd have one set of standard forms for both the town and the village, maybe in terms of building permits and whatever other forms there are. So I think that would make a lot of sense.
So when is that website coming up, the new website? Hey, Martin, when is that website?
I don't have an idea. All I, all I've heard is the town is coming up with a new website, that the current one isn't very workable. And the village found apparently when we went to the, the new website a few years ago, it wasn't very workable for the village. So the village has its own website. Cause there, there really was one for six or seven years. So in these world of shared services, it should save money. It should bring the town and the village together on some project. And, and hopefully lead the way to amalgamating more things that like the forms and whatever. And maybe lead to one building inspector or one's a reinforcement officer between the two. Anyways, that's all I have. But thank you. And also with the chickens, when we got here in seventy-two, we had chicken poop. And you know our lot. It's not even a quarter of an acre.
And it was a problem?
Well, we were raising chickens.
You, you were raising them yourself?
No, we, we, nobody was raising chickens. In the past, somebody had had chickens on this lot. But it's got a big house on much less than a quarter of an acre. And somehow they managed it in those days. So I don't know. But I, I think probably the odor is the, the big concern with raising chickens. Okay, thank you.
So next thing we have here is a request from the school district, two hang banners for graduation. They've been doing that for the past five years. And I would like to make the motion to approve their request. Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
I'll pay attention.
I did. Ted, I just saw this one today, the Relay for Life. Oh, did you have the? Date over here, I'm writing an sure.
I don't think there's a date on it.
Okay. Can you kick that back to them and find out the date when they wanna do it? Okay.
Yeah.
It's usually the first weekend in June.
The Relay for Life, first weekend in June?
Usually I think Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, so it was in coordination with the Relay for Life off the Fairgrounds.
That's the same weekend.
I have his cell phone. I can call.
Confirm it and we'll, we can address that next week.
Okay. He has all the paperwork. I have the insurance form.
Okay, good. And I notice it listed the locations of those.
Yes, he listed the locations.
Four locations? Don't we typically have two locations?
Yes, one on nine and one on East Market. He has one on all four bars, all four.
Okay.
That's what he's proposing.
Yeah. I would think we should probably keep the locations consistent. Usually the one that's right out here, essentially in front of the municipal lot.
Did this group do it in the past?
No.
No? Oh, so this weekend may be already taken, right, this weekend in June? If there's an event going on.
How many of these do we allow a year? I don't know. We have one to be driven through the village every weekend.
Approximately a hundred percent of the request.
No, no, no. Usually it's local, local people that we take care of. This is a national issue. So what we're, what we're trying to say is, is this gonna like go every weekend, somebody's gonna be wanting to do a coin drop? And we kinda have to limit it.
Let's find out the dates and then we can find out.
This is why we're just talking about it more.
Find out the dates and more information about what, what the story is. Essentially every time there's a big event at the Fairgrounds, somebody wants a coin drop. So in terms of, I think we're on to our bid opening, aren't we, Pat?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I just have a little bit of an update on that. It was all, it's all been submitted to engineering for the necessary repairs to the Asher Dam Pedestrian Bridge. We have a letter of appeal that was sent to the state emergency management, who is our kinda go-through FEMA to reopen the funding stream that was, was open a few years back. It's, all looks like it's in line. And we have a couple of bids to open down for the projects. So we got one here for sixty-nine thousand for the Asher Dam portion. Do we give the company now or just wait? Sunup Enterprises. Sixty-nine thousand for Asher Dam, thirty-seven eight for pedestrian bridge.
Yes, I do. This one's from Contact Construction Technology. And their proposal is for both the Asher Dam and Route Nine pedestrian bridge, total lump sum base bid sixty-four thousand nine seven. Sixty-four.
I'm just curious, is this the procedure when you're on ceiling bids, it has to be?
Yeah, we can get your bids for your sewer department for like the phosphates and all that stuff. That's really exciting.
This one is from T J R with a total of fifty-three, two seventy-eight, fifty. Yes. I just wanna make sure I'm seeing it all. They put the whole, all the pictures back in and that's what the rest of it is.
And of course, these all have to be reviewed and qualified that they're apples to apples. Cause there's exclusions listed on qualification on each and every bid. And we have to make sure they're fully compliant with specifications.
Yes.
That's your expertise, right?
So what's the typical procedure for doing the engineering review? We open them down so that we can't order it and the engineer's gotta go up and review it. Alright.
No, we, we do that, we have to engineer it here.
Okay.
But that's okay. Yeah, they are what they are.
We'll have an engineer, we'll have an engineer look at it and hopefully next week. Yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Accessible crosswalks project, that is the one we were just talking about. Well, it went out to bid and we'll be opening those next Tuesday? Okay. So Tuesday.
What's the plan for that work, for it to commence?
Commence as soon as possible to be completed prior to the fair.
Cause there's a, this has all happened prior to my arrival. So, so give me a fail. This crosswalk is in front of M K Bank or one of them is?
Correct.
Cause there, the owner of the M K Bank building is, was before the planning board for some site plan adjustments with regard to the sidewalk. So how these all come together is something that we will wanna take a look at.
Definitely. We'll coordinate that. So they wanna do the whole sidewalk improvement, right?
Yeah. So we would probably wanna coordinate that work. The planning board only reviewed their proposal. And then so the planning board probably should be given the plans and specs for those crosswalks. So that when they do review this further at M K Bank, that they can have that information.
Where's it do that? Is there also one of the way across the street to Baker Shop?
Yes.
So that's the other one, forty-six West Market Street.
I'll just, I'll get, where can I get copies of both?
Now, the one on forty-six West Market Street, those are tied in with range.
Well, I think it's, it's east of there, right?
Yeah, it's east of that.
I think it ties in with the east corner, Loyal Firehouse there, right?
Yeah, the crosswalk is gonna be on the other side of, where the driveway that goes into the Beacon Arms there, over to the.
On the west side?
Yes.
The west side?
I believe so. But anyway, the, the proposed range for the new, for the new project is going back in there, is that the drive? It comes down like more Oak Street and doesn't, doesn't go that far.
It's fine, it's fine.
Yeah.
Ted, you wanna talk about the uniform contract? That's alright.
We had received quotes, Ulster Uniform, Uniform USA, U S A, U S A, and for Centas. And in the total review of all of them, our current uniform contract, which is with Uniform USA, came in. So my recommendation is to keep with our current uniform. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
It, we might not for a bid, right?
I received quotes from all the different uniform companies. We had Ulster Uniform, Uniform USA, Uniform Centas. We all gave. And I, instead of going from department to department, I did a grand total. And it came out that Uniform, Uniform USA eighty-six, eighty-nine was cheaper.
But they came out also per piece?
Yes. Yes, so each, each one was per piece, per department, per person. And I looked, if you went across, in some departments, it was cheaper with one department, one company and some was with another. So I did total.
So I have to make a motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion to renew the contract with the current uniform vendor, must say. And I do have some discussion on that. I'd like to make sure that within the departments, we kinda review what they're using and what they need. And because we had the, you know, we had the one vendor come in. The vast majority of the employees were not wearing their uniforms. And the guy was there to kinda assess what they had, what they wanted, what they needed. And discussions across the departments. Some of them don't use what they provided. And some of them, some of them do. So it'd be nice if we could work with our departments to make sure that we're getting them the right stuff. So we're not, you know, wasting.
Do you wanna discuss the patches?
Sure.
I had also looked into companies to see if they had patches need to put on the current sweatshirts that the guys have purchased with their uniform allowance. So at least they would have something that would be recognizable that they worked for the village and Ryback. So I found a company that would make, I emailed them our PDF of our village seal. They came back with a price on, I don't think I brought that up tonight, a price on what it would be for, yeah.
It was like a dollar fifty.
Yeah, for what would be for the patches. And then we would have to have an independent person work with the guys, however attached them. But at least that, that way. And then talking to the departments, I think everybody was agreeable because the village had bought those sweatshirts. So they, they wanted, that way they would have something to show that they worked. That's what I said. No, we sold out.
Right now, how it works is we provide basically the pants and the shirts and the jacket. But it's not like a heavy winter weight. The one, a couple of guys in water department wear it all the time. And those get picked up and cleaned. The highway guys get jeans. But then we provide, currently they can go buy a winter jacket or suit of a winter gear. So they buy a winter jacket and they don't need another one the next year. So they buy three cards, sweatshirts. So when you see them, they have nothing that says village of Ryback. So the idea is to, you know, give them a patch for the ones that we've already purchased. And then in the future, pass work in. So that instead of, we also provide boots once a year. So the boots will continue. They go wherever they want, buy the boots and submit. But we're gonna order the sweatshirts as a group. So they will not go out. Yes.
The same company will be able to import them.
Heinz needs one of those too.
Yeah.
He's out there every day.
I think it's different than the motion you have on the floor. Maybe I'll get it in the next first. Oh, no, thank you. All those in favor?
Uh, who seconded that? Back this back. Do I need a motion to order those patches?
We were just saying yes, so.
I made a motion to order patches. Okay. I made it. All those in favor? Orders of patches. We won't, we crossed D off the list there. Next thing is employee health insurance plan. The current plan is going away as they have a federation. So we need to pick a, pick a new one. And they sent across some potential alternatives for us. So anyone wants to, anyone is a, wants to work on this?
When's it have to be done by?
It's July first, right? Yeah. So we gotta come up with something that's agreeable and makes the comparability clause in the, in the union contract.
You're good with union stuff, right, Scott?
Okay, Scott, you and I will work on this when we do the police contract. I was outside. Okay. So, last week, Howie and I went to the Dutch County Supervisors and Mayor's Association meeting, where they talked about the state budget and the potential effect on all the municipal budgets. And I guess there's a lot of confusion, misinformation out there. But basically it's a three-year plan. And in two thousand fifteen, what we would need to do is, hey, the tax cap, which is gonna be consistent. And then, you know, identify a plan for increased efficiency, which could be just about anything, right? And then two thousand sixteen, you have to meet the tax cap and show a one percent operating budget efficiency improvement. And do the same thing in two thousand seventeen. And it all hinges on this, the plan. And I guess some of the misinformation is that if you were to exceed the cap, then the homeowners would lose their star rebate. That's kinda the message that's being sent out there. But that's not exactly accurate. It would be, what they're gonna be doing is sending out rebate checks. And they said that for, you know, a village, it'd probably be about five dollars per, per household. About ten dollars, something like that. So the, the threat is, is not quite the same as the actual impact.
So I don't understand.
You understand.
They send the checks for five or ten dollars?
Well, it'll be one check that will include your school, your town. And if you live in the village, the village tax. So the village portion of it, yeah, your check may be, I don't know, three hundred dollars or two hundred dollars. But most of that will be the school tax. And the smallest piece would be the village tax. So. The actual impact to the homeowner would be very small.
That's instead of the star?
No, no, no. This is an, it's called an efficiency rebate check. So trying to get the municipalities and the school districts to be under the tax cap, which is determined by the state. And like Heath said, school will be the most, the biggest portion of this check. So.
Ahead of schools first.
Yeah.
It is not instead of the, of the star.
You're still, you're still gonna get your star.
And the enhanced star.
And the enhanced star, yes. It's not affecting that. This is an added. This is an added.
Incentive.
Incentive, yeah.
Some of the message that went out was that, hey, if you're, if the village or the town, if they don't meet the cap, then we're coming after your star.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I wrote in that.
Yes. No, that's not the case. So the last thing here on the other business, we have a proclamation for Vera Straub Van Wagner. She will be turning a hundred and ten on May twenty-fourth. She resides at the Baptist home, she's the oldest living resident in Dutchess County. Was married in nineteen thirty-three. Was involved in Straub's ice cream business in the city of Acipsi, was an avid gardener. So therefore be resolved that I hereby proclaim Saturday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, is Vera Straub Van Wagner Day in the village of Rhinebeck. And on the village, on behalf of the village, we extend our best wishes and a happy birthday.
Happy birthday Vera. Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten, all those, all those in Dutchess County.
That's as much as you will need to get almost.
Look at that. Got some good years left in us. Oh Gary, you want to talk about the sidewalk most up?
Well, it's two things. One, just to give you a quick, the project description was submitted for the pre-review for the grant for the transportation alternatives program, so we submitted that to the Department of Transportation and we should be getting some feedback shortly, June eleventh is the final deadline for that. We're getting, Dr. Phelan is working on a letter for us, which our consultant, Victor Kornelius, tells us that's the key letter we need. Other than that, he's working on, we'll get letters to support from our state senators. Yeah, he feels that that's the only ones we really need. I'm also contacting some other groups like some of the senior groups that represent seniors in the area to get letters to support from them. Victor says it's not gonna make a big difference, but anyway. Anyway, so that's working. Also, when I was at the bicycle and pedestrian alternatives meeting, Ms. Ruiz, who works for the county, said that they have some free things they can give to people if, in conjunction with bicycle or pedestrian routes, such as bike racks, garbage receptacles, some other things. And the way it was presented to me, these were freebies, all we have to do is enter an agreement. Jim Reardon had been the liaison to this committee, so I assumed Rhinebeck had made an agreement with, but found out we were not. So they have forwarded the information to, to the mayor and I see no, I don't, I haven't looked it over with a fine tooth comb, but I see no strings attached to this one. So I see no reason why we shouldn't enter into that agreement.
I'll send it to Rich, I'll have her take a look for us.
And we have, she provided a sample from the town of Pauling, just to see, so we can see example. But a lot of other municipalities have entered into this agreement.
Okay, thanks. In terms of correspondence, I did get a letter from the Boy Scouts, just reminding us that they have, their, their big weekend is coming up here at the fairgrounds. I think they're gonna have thirty-one hundred registered scouts. So those are gonna be over there camping, there's fireworks. So they just asked for our cooperation in the amount of emergency, so I'm sure they will, they will have. What are sewer adjustments?
Okay. Gary, do you want to do the water sewer adjustments?
You have it all.
Uh, sewer, we had new two owners, twenty-five each, and then one final for ninety-four, ninety-five. And we moved the collection fee of twenty-five dollars, it was, the check was in the office at that right time. We had four new owners and water adjustments for owners, five finals. And they, we had an eight hundred and ten dollar adjustment for, for the town pool. The reason for the eight hundred dollars, there was not much water consumed, the reason for eight hundred dollars is because of the large size of the pipe that they have, so we, we normally charge them eight hundred and ten dollars and we don't actually collect money from them. We had seventy-five dollars we wrote off for the town, for the village police owner. We added a, a bad check fee of twenty-five dollars. And one of our customers broke, one of the, the water meters above him exposed. The seller was supposed to hold people and charging twenty-five dollars for replacing it. So that's it, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the water and wastewater adjustments as. So I plan here, that has this.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We got four minutes there.
Wednesday, March fifth. Tuesday, April eighth. Tuesday, April twenty-nine. Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. And then there was the voucher approvals for January, February, March, and April.
Yeah, we never did that before, right?
It's usually part of the minutes, but I didn't have it. It's usually part attached, it has to be part of the minutes. And I didn't have the attach, so I didn't have the information, so I went back to it since I became quick and I got the information.
So can, I, are these all the vouchers we, it's, it's, it feels like I'm signing hundreds of vouchers.
These are all the vouchers, these are the totals that Chrissy gave me, all the vouchers that were done. And, and the check numbers and the totals per department, from manual and written and computer checks for January, February, March, April.
So that's a, that's a composite of all the vouchers that we assigned.
Right, for each month.
Now, this is kind of needless to me actually because, you know.
So we're, but we're approving the ones from previous months, so the ones that were signed today, we're gonna approve next month.
Correct.
What I mean is because I see the numbers that we have, I don't really correlate them with anything.
You've already signed them, you've already approved the vouchers.
Just we've never seen that before.
The totals have to be part of the minutes. I'm going to try from now on to have it at the bottom of the minutes when I give you the minutes to be.
So, so for years we haven't done that and then since, since you, since you I am, that's what we do.
It's supposed to be part of the minutes.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes and vouchers detailed by.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the vouchers for this month are downstairs.
Correct, they're online.
Ready to go. So you guys, clear what you got to deal with the vouchers?
They have to be signed tomorrow if possible, so that they can start to be processed.
I would like in the, if we can, moving forward, if we can get to them on the, before the meeting, so that if something comes up. I know every month that I look through them, I see things that bring up questions in my mind and, you know, it'd be good if we all looked at them beforehand, cause we're all gonna sign them anyway. So we look at them and.
It's, it's hard for, for that department, for Chrissy and for things to get the, sometimes getting the information with data.
Yeah, you really don't have an opportunity before, today to, to look at it, but if there's any chance we can look at them, so. Cause basically that's our chance to look through and say, if it looks right, like today I found what I thought were maybe some duplicates in there. I saw they put a catchphrase in cover, etc. Good. Okay. So I'd like to, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I think I have a package table, telephone.
I'll talk about that.
Yes, I have a quote, it is a little over a hundred dollars, I think. No, that's a package.
To move the telephone.
To move the telephone from the storage, our vault storage area into the hall downstairs by the stairwell. So then therefore it'd be accessible to be, to anybody downstairs, because right now it's in a locker room.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk to you, cause I didn't understand, do you have a telephone in the locker?
There's a telephone in a locker room.
Do we want to give access to?
Why do we need a common area?
I want, because right now John Ramondo's downstairs and if we need to get, or John, if I need to get in touch with him or if he has a phone call, whatever, that way he has a phone, right now he'd have to.
Why don't we just move it over to where his area?
Because hopefully potentially it's part of that area would be made into a storage, you have storage space for.
We mean John's downstairs in the basement?
He has, he has, like his area, he has some of his catalogs and some of his tools and stuff downstairs in the boiler room.
Where are you proposing moving to?
Just downstairs by, on the other side, just downstairs on the other side of the stairwell.
Kind of by the walkout, so?
No, no, the basement upstairs, yeah, yeah.
That's, okay.
Yeah, basement, there's one now downstairs in the, it's by the vault, but it's, it's in a locker area. The old company said, well, superior said it'd take about an hour. I had them look also, because Tricia thought she needed to have them do some work here so that she could use a phone that is for, for court. But we found that that line is active, so we don't need to have them doing that. So it would be just having them move the line.
Third one?
So I can go ahead and do that.
Do we need a motion on that? You had another budget, so that's all you're all rising. Okay.
Okay, just one more thing, I forgot to mention their district department. Heath came up with his form and he started with the highway department, mentioned it's been a little bit of a war. Anyone forgot that?
Let's hold on.
Oh, okay. We'll talk about that after we get down.
Okay.
Yeah, history, for us in history.
Well.
Anything else? So I'll make a motion to go to executive session to discuss individual personnel history, employment history?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn the executive session? All those in favor?
Aye.
So in terms of the type of contract, we decided that we would, we're gonna come back at our next meeting and discuss it more.
Sorry.
So, yeah, so we're gonna go to committee.
That was not our intention.
Yes, so it was not covered in our executive session.
Thank you for clarifying that.
What's that?
I said, thanks for clarifying it.
Yeah, so we're gonna have, Rachel's gonna review the, the contract proposal from the town and then we're gonna come up with our recommendation for next, next week. That'll be the twentieth.
When are we meeting?
Twentieth, September. Anybody else got anything? Come make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.